We still have people who are returning, but we can start since we already began for the day earlier. We can start again without a forum. I believe we have the bill sponsors here for the bills we're taking up, which they happen to both be the same bill sponsor. So we're good to go. We're going to take up the public hearing on LD21, an Act to amend the medical marijuana laws, and LD560, an Act regarding patient information under the Maine Medical Use of Marijuana Act. And they are both presented by Representative Diane Russell from Portland. We're not going to see much in here today, are we?
No. I know how much is up there now.
Apparently, people don't know that when I say 12:15, I mean 12:15. I don't.
I knew that. Why didn't you? Why didn't you get to have lunch and I'm still waiting? So the testimony in front of you puts LD5 and LD21 together, just in full disclosure, and then 560 is separate. So again, my name is Diane Russell and I represent District 39 in the Maine House, representing the good people of Mandrake Hill downtown Portland and the beautiful Casco Peak Islands. Thank you for yet again an opportunity to speak before you. LD21 will be easy. This bill was meant to be a vehicle for the committee in case there were some aspect of the Medical Marijuana Act that needed to be tweaked, but it did not have a bill. I did not expect that just about every aspect of the Act would have its own bill. So feel free to either keep the bill as a vehicle or vote it ought not to pass. It was designed to be a placeholder bill in case we needed something comprehensive. That is LD21. It's a concept draft.
Well, then, let's see.
That's LD21. And okay, so that's also at the very bottom of LD5 testimony. It's confusing how all the bills are put together. So we should have just done separate for each one. Do you want me to start it on 560, though?
Yes, you could.
Okay. And I did manage to get the testimony printed. I forgot to print the amendment, so I'll read it to you in a minute. But first, let me tell you that I was rather rapt with a series of bills that came out at once and didn't notice that the bill as written is the reverse of what I intended. As drafted, it authorizes DHHS to collect the patient data. It is requesting a separate agency bill. As a legislature, we had a long history of opposing patient registries of any kind. My intent in putting in the bill was to prevent such data collection. As such, I have an amendment for consideration. And I will read it and then I will print it out after I get some lunch, my blood sugar comes back. The amendment basically says the Department of Health and Human Services shall not require healthcare providers to send personally identifiable and personally identifiable patient information over the Internet, including name, address, and date of birth. But let me walk you through the important things to try to keep in mind when reviewing this amendment. But let me be very clear that I am strongly opposed to type of personal data collection DHHS was requesting. Does that have a picture? You look confused.
Nope. I'm just trying to keep up.
Okay.
Again, I don't even need to look at the original bill.
No, I don't even look at it because it's...
You're going to tell me about the...
Right. And I'll print it out for you in a minute.
Yep.
So let me give you a little bit of history, let you folks know, but I think for those who are listening, it could be worth revisiting. Maine's medical marijuana program has gone through a variety of changes since voters approved Citizens Initiative to expand the program in 2009. At the start of 2010, a bill passed requiring patients to register with the state, creating a database of Maine patients who used marijuana as a medicine. This was soon overturned by LD1296 in 2011 by a bill sponsored by Representative Dennis Sanderson at Millows Private Support. That law restored the intent of the Citizens Initiative and removed mandatory patient registration with the state. The bill created a voluntary registration card for patients who wanted the extra documentation. The problem, as we currently have it, the Department of Health and Human Services has been instructed to collect patient totals by county since 2010, which they have gathered via a voluntary patient registration. However, those numbers were incomplete since they do not include patients who choose not to register. On January 5th of this year, the department launched a new online portal with the stated purpose of gathering complete numbers of how many people are certified for medical use of marijuana per county. Unfortunately, the new online portal requires entry of far more than simply the patient zip codes and requires healthcare providers to enter the patient's name, their address, and their date of birth. The collection of confidential personally identifiable patient information violates the intent of LD1296 and essentially opens the door for a new statewide patient registry. No legislation or rulemaking was ever passed to authorize the creation of an online portal that requires a healthcare provider to enter private personally identifiable patient information. What my amendment does is to allow the department to continue to use the patient portal to collect data by county, town, or even zip code, but explicitly prohibit the department from requiring medical providers to submit personally identifiable patient information, including the name, the street address, or mailing address, or date of birth to the department. The zip code continues to be authorized. Let me talk about the dangers of data collection. Many of you don't know this. I spend my private sector at work. I've spent a significant amount of time researching online privacy and data security. I actually have a bill working its way through the legislature right now that would create a study commission to review our privacy and data security laws to see where we can and should improve our current protections. We've just recently seen headlines because hackers from Russia launched a DNS service attack on the Maine.gov website, shutting it down for three days. While this hack was not about capturing information, it did demonstrate that we may not be as secure as we believed. Further, we are still unsure what the Anthem breach consequences will shake out to be. DHHS has said that they are not storing the information they are requesting from their online portal on their server. However, once that information is sent over the intertubes, the digital impression is difficult to erase. When it comes to data collection, the question is never if the data will suffer a breach, but rather when and to what consequence. Additionally, creation of a statewide patient registry when federal prosecution is still a possibility is, in my humble opinion, irresponsible. It puts patients at risk, and the administration policies change. It means that we have access if they combine this data set with other data sets to track down patients. For this reason, it is better that DHHS be prohibited once and for all, once and for all, from collecting personally identifiable patient data. DHHS asserts that, quote, "patient information is not captured or stored in this new system." This strains credulity, but even collection of personally identifiable information for a brief time opens that data to potential leaking for malicious purposes or subpoenaed by the federal government. Let's talk about patient concerns for a moment. Patients understand the risks that such data collection poses to their privacy, and collection of patient data will certainly have a chilling effect on legal medical marijuana use. Some patients may be tempted to use medical marijuana illegally, as we heard earlier today, rather than risk reporting it to the state agency. The fear of federal prosecution is also not imaginary for patients. Just in 2012, the federal government subpoenaed patient information from Oregon. Other patients may throw away medical marijuana entirely. In the interest of establishing a safe, regulated system of responsible marijuana use, it is important that we avoid policies that might create unintended consequences, forcing people back into the black market we have been trying to eliminate. Finally, let's talk about privacy for a moment. Medical decisions, including what medicines to take, should be between a patient and a provider. Whether or not a person uses medical marijuana as appropriate therapy for a medical condition is a patient's decision made in consultation with the appropriate recommendation and certification by their provider. The government, again, should not be interfering in the doctor-patient relationship. It should also not be putting that patient at risk by collecting their personal information, however long. Thank you for your consideration of this amended bill. I look forward to answering any questions.
Thank you very much, Representative Russell. Any questions? Representative Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Representative, I know for studies to be conducted, you need to collect some data. Do you have any thoughts on that, about how we can still be collecting data so that we can move on for better legislation on this without compromising patients?
So can I clarify what study? Are you talking about research?
I'm sure research is numbers and efficacy and all the stuff that we need to kind of prove that maybe this works or prove it doesn't, but you know, do you have any thoughts on that?
I have a little bit of a thought. I think my mother would probably have better thoughts because she...
Your mom?
She understands more how these medical studies go than I do. However, let me just say that those medical studies are done at the physician level and at the provider level, and they can then take the aggregate of information and present it. A lot of those studies are published in peer-reviewed journals, as you know. So I don't see a space where the state would need that kind of information. I think when you start seeing things in the peer-reviewed journals around pancreatic cancer remission and other types of things, when you hear the stories from families, that I think is far more compelling in some cases than aggregate data. I think what the problem is that we, as a legislature, ask DHHS to track the number of patients across the state so we'd have a sense of how many patients there are. So we've actually asked for that information. I think DHHS went a little over and above asking for social, not for socials, but for date of birth information, which if you couple it with a driver's license, for example, or some other information, it's not that hard. Maybe in my city, it would be hard to take a date of birth and a zip code and be able to compile it. You can certainly limit it. But if you're going into my hometown of Bryant Pond, you could most certainly take my date of birth and couple it with that zip code and figure out pretty quickly that I am the one that the federal government should come after. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Representative Russell?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And again, LD21, you can do as you will. It was designed to be a vehicle, so...
If you don't have enough fun, you don't have to kill anything, so...
Keep the... How to see a presentation. I really...
Okay. Any legislative cosponsors that want to speak in favor of LD21 or LD560? Any members of the public here today who wants to speak in favor of LD21 or LD560? We only got through two out of our 12 bills. We'll see how we do.
This will be clear. LD560, as I understand it, as the amendment was just read...
I have an issue to introduce yourself again, just because people listen over the Internet.
Senator Rehan from Dixfield.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. So LD560, as Representative Russell just introduced the amendment, would eliminate the database and card issuance that DHHS is currently using. I had big issues with this for some of the concerns that Ms. Russell mentioned, and I also noted that Anthem's, you know, systems have been breached, Maine.gov has been breached, and I just am not secure putting my daughter's information out there. Her date of birth and her zip code in the small town that we live in would certainly give identifying information and put us at risk. And I'm not only just considering that that could be a risk for her medical information, but also for the federal government and illegal. I'm less concerned about a legal aspect because I am concerned about people knowing where these medical marijuana homes are, and people seeking marijuana can then find out where these medical homes are, and the same with caregivers. Quite frankly, I think that the medical marijuana program in Maine is an award-winning program, and maybe we don't need to ask the question that provoked DHHS to get to this point and try to collect this data to answer this question, or maybe there needs to be a better way to answer this question with just numbers and without this identifying information and issuing cards. So I am concerned with people who operate a cash-based business out of their home as a caregiver, putting that information out there and into the wrong hands, and I think that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much. Okay. Still taking testimony in favor of LD21 and LD560? Good afternoon.
My name is Catherine Lewis. I'm with Medical Marijuana Caregivers of Maine. And my testimony, as written and submitted, is actually against 560, but with the amendment that Diane just read, it's exactly what we were going to say in the opposite as far as patient privacy. We don't have a problem with the issuance of the cards. We actually think that helps law enforcement and people to identify what they need to. Our issue is the collection of the data, putting in people's names and addresses, as Diane said. Once that goes out into the Internet, it is very difficult, impossible to recapture, and we are against any type of data collection as I mentioned from the very beginning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else speak in favor of either of these two bills, LD21 and LD560?
Good afternoon. Senator Reiki, Representative 15, and members of the DHHS committee. My name is Samantha Brown from South Berwick, and I oppose LD560. I originally opposed the privacy issues. I think it's already being addressed. The new card system, as far as previously, patients would sign a document regarding caregiver-patient relations. When the patient or caregiver breaks off the relation, the document is then destroyed, and then the patient is free to sign on with another caregiver or dispensary. The new system will give the patient a card to give to their caregiver. The problem was where the patient has to release their card to a designated caregiver or dispensary. We are already seeing problems as a caregiver seems to fall off the face of the earth somehow and will not release the patient back the card, therefore leaving the patient without medication or until they contact DHHS and wait 10 or so days until the card to be given to another caregiver. Or less extreme, where the patient may need to wait for the card to show up in the mail three or four days after the caregiver sends it back. For example, I have seen children with epilepsy who depend on marijuana to stop their life-threatening seizures. They're able to get a hold of their caregiver. It's dangerous for the child to have to wait for their replacement card, but the child may need their medication the next day. They can't wait 10 days. On the monthly reports, there are some patients who use more product than allowed by law, referring to Title 22, Chapter 558(c). It is dismissable in court if one can prove that it's medically necessary to use more than legal amount. This proposed bill will document these patients. I find this documentation very concerning for both the caregiver and patient. Most of these patients are sick without funds. They should not have to have the added physical and financial stress to take it to court, and the caregiver should be allowed to provide the best medication treatment without fear of prosecution. Is there a tracking system for Ritalin, which is the same factor on the brain as protein? What about Dystat, a dangerous benzo that is prescribed to my daughter? While marijuana may also be a product someone could desire to abuse, it's much safer than alcohol, which is a legal substance for abuse that one can buy at any convenience store in as much quantity as desired. I'm sorry, but in my honest opinion, it is none of the government's business to know what is in our medicine cabinets. I find, in finding medical marijuana as a treatment option for my child, I naturally initially had many concerns. As I started doing my research, I put all my concerns to rest. I started to become passionate about the plant as I saw the amazing things it can do. I wish the state would look at these stories and realize what we have all behind me have come to realize that this isn't what the stigma says that it is. On inspections, I do not disagree with inspections. However, currently, there are many issues that need to be worked out before employing inspections now. When hiring law enforcement to come into our gardens, I'm not convinced that they are not looking at us as criminals. I do not believe they are going to look, they're looking to protect the consumer. I do not believe they are knowledgeable enough in agriculture to be doing these inspections. Caregivers are not criminals. I'm sure with everything, you'll have your bad apples, but the rest of the law-abiding citizens should not be treated as such. And I don't believe that the inspections done by professional in our field of agriculture won't pick up on it. I also believe that inspections will drive the non-law-abiding citizens back to the black market.
Thank you. Are you done? Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? Representative Sanderson?
Did you just first copy of your testimony?
Yeah, I definitely... Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Still taking testimony in favor of LD21, LD560?
Hi. Good afternoon. Michael Fowler, Scott, Maine. Thank you. I am here to represent a large group of people I know who are friends, who are all licensed, law-abiding caregivers, and they asked for me to come up here and talk to you about LD21. And they really believe that doctors and patients should have full control of their own medical treatments without undue government interference. I believe LD21 will help with that issue, with that, and so I thank you.
Thank you very much. You didn't do work so far.
What's that? You have the brevity award.
Anybody else who'd speak in favor of LD21 or LD560? Yeah, please come on up.
Senator Russell's change, it might be a little bit different.
I understand that.
My name is LeS Tito. I'm from Portland, Maine. Let me start by saying that my former employer has 20 or more employees in one of his three offices. Cannabis is creating many, many jobs in Maine. It's important, I think, to note that. I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Dustin Sulaq, because I've had the unique opportunity for 40 hours a week for the last two years for sitting behind his front desk and working for him and meeting and reading the face of medical marijuana in Maine, which is the patients. I've met children, husbands, wives, partners, aides, guardians, social workers, interpreters, veterans, people from every block of life, speaking, in many cases, their last hope when all other treatments have failed. I've also seen the amazing personal changes one year after people have ended cannabis, men, women, and children whose lives are better because of this plant. I'd just like to say that I used the patient portal, the DHHS patient portal, from the beginning, January 5th, until my departure from Dr. Sulaq's office on March 30th. The week of implementation, the portal did not work very well at all. It caused huge backups in our office that created an administrative nightmare from the point of view of somebody that had to sit behind the desk and deal with the patients and the paperwork involved in this. The week of my departure, the website was down four out of five days for most of the day because of a breach and denial of service attack on the website. I have a dear friend who I asked questions about this because I know a fair amount about duty, because my father worked at MIT on computers. My girlfriend used to take, he was a state police officer, and used to work in the state police kitty porn area and take information off computers and assured me that there is no way that once information has been submitted over an electronic not database, as I've been told, though it is a database, you're putting data into a field, it means it's a database. That data is in a computer somewhere, and talented hackers and talented people that know how to get into that information can do so. And I have a great concern for the health and welfare of the people that were patients who are just like me and me, no different. They come from every rock of life. They're doctors, lawyers, parents, pretty much look like everybody in this room and shouldn't be put at risk because somebody wants to make account. Their personal information should absolutely not be put over any electronic wire. It would have been very easy as an administrative employee to be able to supply the DHHS with zip codes. I could have easily done a spreadsheet on a weekly basis with the websites, data sites that we use for retaining patient information. So you know, I guess part of the problem with this is that DHHS didn't consult with anybody who was actually dealing with these patients. They just went on ahead and did this portal, and you know, ultimately, it opens people's FBI up, which is personal health information, up for access. I mean, date of birth and address is pretty specific, and if somebody went into, say, was able to hack into somebody's firewall, you could very easily find that information even years down the road. So I guess I don't believe my concern is unfounded as major retailers, government, international news agencies and organizations, and containment companies have all been in the news with recent breaches of data and security, and I hope that the bill makes it so that we don't have that identifying information of patients.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much. Still taking testimony in favor. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Ken Little. I'm from Corney, Maine. Excuse me. I'm here to support the LD21. Basically, the thing that I wanted to mention first most to you was that there was someone earlier that said, Dean, there's not been a lot of research, so we really can't do anything. We shouldn't be opening this up to different symptoms because we really just don't have the research to support it. That is a chicken and egg situation where we're going to end up with, we can't get the research, well, we can't get the research because we're not doing enough, because it's not been legalized or, you know, at the federal level. So that's all I wanted to mention to you on this particular bill. I'll be back with the others later on. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I think you're off the hook for now.
Okay, good.
Still taking testimony in favor of LD21 and LD560? Sorry. Oh, that's fine. They're giving this gentleman time to squeeze through the back row.
Oh, let me take a little over there.
There you go. Thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Hello. Everybody focused, if they testified already, you still need to introduce yourself so that people over the Internet can hear who you are.
Yes. All right. My name is Brandon Boatman. I'm a caregiver in the city of Frankfort. Ladies and gentlemen of the committee, I'd like to say a few words on LD560. Some of the things in it make a lot of sense. Something that the Department of Health implemented was a card that you have to give to your designated caregiver or dispensary, and in order to switch suppliers again, you have to get this card back, which seems to me like a major, kind of an inconvenience and a hindrance, really. If a patient is to deal with a caregiver that lives, like, for instance, I'm a caregiver. I deliver product up to an hour away to people. I don't charge delivery fees. I get $200 an ounce minus 5.5% sales tax, and if they decide they want to go with somebody different, they got to get the, you got to get the card back from the caregiver. Now, I could drive it to them and really put myself out. You could put it in the mail, which would be not a nice thing to do, but financially speaking, about, you know, the best alternative. I just, it seems like there should be a way to handle this without the cards. They'd have to be passed around, the original card. Imagine the inconvenience of losing the card, I suppose. I don't know how long it would take to get a replacement. I mean, I know it's already going on. I'm not sure if this bill, if it's even an option to remove the cards. I just feel the need to just kind of say that is a little bit of an inconvenience, and it's not right for the patients. Another thing is... Another thing is, I know that one of the, the proposals written in here was that a caregiver would have to submit monthly reports on the amount of cannabis that each patient is purchasing. I just don't think that's necessary as a privacy concern. I just don't see how it's the government's business how much medicine is being used by each one of my patients, not to mention me having to report the amount of medicine that's being sold. I already report sales as sales taxes, but I just don't think that the amount of cannabis somebody's consuming, the name, and all this information should be compiled by anybody in the government. I suppose would be my opinion on it. So I don't like the requirements to report transfers of medicine from the caregivers to the patients. I mean, if that was gone, if the cards are a necessary thing to report, you know, just the basis of information to the, I understand the government wants to know how many medical marijuana patients are in the state. That's valuable information. But I just think there could be better ways of obtaining the information. It doesn't involve, you know, giving out your addresses, things like that. I guess, anybody have any questions? If not, I suppose I'm finished.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Testimony in favor?
Oh.
Of 21 or 560?
Good. How are you doing? Good afternoon, Representative Gattins, under Haskell, and members of the committee. My name is Hillary Lister, and I live in Athens. I'm here to speak in support of LD560 as amended. I was involved with meetings with the department earlier this year. There was a caregiver forum. They also had meetings with healthcare providers discussing some of the changes that were being proposed to the medical marijuana programs. And this new certification card and portal was discussed in the meetings, and concerns were raised at the time of the requirement that a patient's name, address, and date of birth be entered into this portal. The legislature in 2010 authorized the department to, in their annual report, report how many patients there are per county, and this portal would do that. However, requiring the name, address, and date of birth to be entered over the internet compromises patient safety and privacy and doesn't, it has not been authorized by any legislation or rulemaking. In 2011, legislation passed specifying that patient information was clearly confidential. There were concerns from people who worked in a number of situations where if their name was ever put on a list or subpoenaed by the federal government, their licensing, their jobs, people who work for state government, people who work in law enforcement even, who now do have doctor's recommendations, they are some of the people who raised concerns of if their name ends up on a list or ends up getting hacked through this website, that that would make them not want to be a medical marijuana patient. And then the question is, would they continue to use medical marijuana illegally, or would they have to use a medication that has negative side effects that they had chosen not to use? This portal really punishes people who are trying to follow the law. It could be easily altered to specifically just have the healthcare provider enter the patient's zip code, and then the rest of the information could be entered at the doctor's office, as it was being previously with the old certification form. That information, I don't see how it would require any extra work for the doctor's office. You could have a PDF form with fields where the doctor's office could enter the name, address, and date of birth, but it wouldn't be sent over the internet. So I think this bill is a simple solution to something that creates risks that aren't necessary and unauthorized by the medical marijuana law, and I hope you'll consider this as an option to deal with the problem. There is currently a lawsuit pending against the department from a group of patients who are concerned about this, against, about their privacy, and who are going to take legal action on this unless it is hopefully addressed through the legislature. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for Misses? Thank you. Still taking testimony in favor of either of the two bills? I'm going to take testimony in opposition to either of the two bills.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Perfect time for me to end off. My name is Andrea Tartiffran. I researched the use of medicinal cannabis after helping my sister through the end of her life and seeing what medicinal cannabis, I mean, seeing what pharmaceuticals did to my sister. I have a form of arthritis, and the reason I chose to come up here now is because I can't stand for very long or sit for very long, so I may have to do a little shifting around. I have, I'm 53 years old, and I have several joint replacements. I've had three back surgeries. After helping my sister pass, it pushed me, I had researched the use and utilization of medicinal cannabis. I consider myself very educated on this matter. After my sister passed, I chose to make the shift to complete in 100% pharmaceutical-free. There are several reasons for that. My liver and my kidneys are a-okay. I want to keep them that way. I want to be able to treat my disease process in a manner that allows me to educate myself how to do this, how to do it myself in an educated manner. Okay? I am currently 100% for medicinal cannabis. Medicinal marijuana is a misnomer, number one. The name needs to be switched from marijuana to cannabis. That's its genetic, that is a species name, that is a plant name. Once that happens, a lot of negative connotation will be removed. Okay? This can be expedited very quickly. You just need to all sit down and meet with the right people, or not the right people, but you need to sit down just like this, but this could be expedited, is what I'm telling you. My choice to utilize medicinal cannabis, and I use it in a